Apache Junction Council Meeting to Order. The invocation will be led by Vice Mayor Wilson and the pledge by Councilmember Rizzi.
Heavenly Father, we are gathered together this wonderful evening to perform city business. We ask for your guidance as we again attempt to keep this community a great place to live, work, raise a family, and perform a business. We want to say we have been reminded of your power and remind of how water flows in this area and how we must obey the natural rules that prevent additional damage and dangers. When we do not obey the rules of nature, we appreciate this moisture and just wish it was over a longer period of time. We also want to express our thanks for protecting and assisting all our first responders that had to respond to situations during this event. We are grateful that everyone was surely safely removed and no one was majorly injured in our community. Again, we ask for your continued hand of protection for all our first responders and extend this to our military members of our community wherever they are serving throughout the world. Bring them all home safe each and every day. In the Lord's name, amen.
Amen.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor Sertie.
Here.
Vice Mayor Wilson.
Here.
Councilmember Barker.
Here.
Councilmember Evans.
Here.
Councilmember Rizzi.
Present.
Councilmember Schroeder.
Here.
Councilmember Struble.
Here.
You have a quorum, Your Honor?
Do we have a motion on the consent agenda?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that the consent agenda be accepted as presented and that the contract for comprehensive design, preparation of plans, and specifications for construction of the county basin dog park be awarded to J-2 Engineering and Environmental Design LLC in the amount of fifty-seven thousand three hundred and eighty-three dollars plus an additional ten percent contingency for a total amount not to exceed sixty-three thousand one hundred and twenty-one dollars and thirty cents, and that the council ratify Resolution Number nineteen dash fifteen, an extinguishment of forest street alignment from Tomahawk Road to Vista Road reflecting the corrected exhibit.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Schroeder.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson.
Yes.
Councilmember Barker.
Yes.
Councilmember Evans.
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi.
Yes.
Councilmember Struble.
Yes.
Mayor Sertie.
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor?
And if anybody wonders how that happens, we discuss those either in the work session or in previous work sessions. A presentation of Thirty Year Service Award to Lisa Emmanheiser, Chief in Bryant. That's correct.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, staff. I'll let you stand over here. This is one of those evenings where it's kind of nice that I'm not saying goodbye to one of my staff, but she's still here after thirty years of service, and I promised her I would try to do as much as I possibly could to embarrass her in front of her family. And what I won't do, I'm sure they already have, so. I just want everybody to remember that Lisa has served with the city since September of nineteen eighty-nine, when she came on as a complaint clerk with the police department. And she's now up to where she's been with the nine-one-one center as one of our most senior, not in age, but most senior telecommunication dispatchers. And dispatcher's job is one of those unsung professionals that they work normally with our emergency response teams, and they gather essential information from a variety of different callers, and you've seen the laugh-in type things, or the silly things that people call in, but from people that are in traumatic times and need help from either police or fire, or they need an ambulance or some medical assistance. But they also deal with our youth, their children that call in when their parents are in danger. And Lisa has assumed the responsibility of not only being our most senior telecommunications person, but also as a mentor, a guider, and a trainer during her period in there. And going back a little bit, back to nineteen eighty-nine, when she came on as a complaint clerk, she was making a whopping six dollars and ninety-five cents an hour.
Wow.
A year later, she became an admin clerk, and she bumped all the way up to seven ninety-one an hour. And then twelve days after that, they must have seen something in her communication skills. Not sure what those are. Maybe it was the listening part. She became a dispatcher in our nine-one-one center and then went up to nine forty-nine an hour. Two thousand and six, jumping ahead, she became a senior telecommunications officer, and she's worked in there and been at the interim program manager or the manager of the center as well. One of the other things she does, and she jumps in on her own time and works with the Special Olympics as a coordinator for that project with the police department, and that deals with our youth that are in somewhat need or special needs children, and we raise funds to make sure that they participate in the Special Olympics. One of the other things to talk about is that not only has she done all that and then some, but I pulled up your personnel file. So during that time, I got rid of all those internal affairs things that we normally have to hang on to. But I'll try to make this short, but back in nineteen ninety-one, she received, which is like two years after she came on the job, the, at that time, police chief's letter of appreciation, again in nineteen ninety-four, commander's letter of appreciation in nineteen eighty-four, two months after that. Sheriff Al Pyle recognized her in nineteen ninety-nine for a homicide case she was working as a dispatcher on with the Maricopa County Sheriff's Office. Two thousand, she received the police chief's letter of commendation for her assistance and again in communications and coordinating some efforts in the center. Letter of appreciation from a citizen, and these are things that we really look forward to because a lot of times, staff doesn't get recognized for the jobs that they do on a daily basis, but a citizen took the time to make a recognition, and this is in regards to assisting a victim that was in a drowning situation, and unfortunately, the person did not survive, but she made every attempt to assist in that one. And two thousand and two, a month and a half later, in assistance during coordinating a call for services between Maricopa County and Apache Junction on armed robbery call where the offenders were taken into custody. Two thousand and four, another citizen award. Distinguished service to the department and the city in two thousand and five. Commander's award in two thousand and nine. Assistance in a suicide attempt in two thousand and ten. And she got the letter of commendation for continued sustained professionalism within the police department as a trainer and a coordinator. She assisted in getting the unit citation for the nine-one-one center, and then after all that time, she also got a special recognition from the Special Olympics Committee for her assistance in coordinating fundraising. During the plane crash at the Superstition Mountain, she was awarded a letter of appreciation from not only our department or the city, but from the Pinal County Sheriff's Office. She was the Communication Telecommunication Officer of the Year in two thousand and eleven, another unit citation because of her leadership. On a suicidal suspect that had surrendered for a letter of commendation in two thousand and sixteen, and then a significant operations ribbon and recognition during active shooter situation in two thousand and nineteen. So with that, I promised the city manager I should let him have a few words to assist in this recognition, but thirty years doing the job, it's one of these situations that they're probably the most underappreciated, underrecognized people within the police department because they're there twenty-four-seven as we are, but they're getting calls from all sorts of people in all sorts of situations. They have to be calm, they have to be respectful, and they do a hell of a job, so congratulations. I have one more thing I'm going to give her, and then I'll let the city manager take over. So one of the things that traditions we do in the police department is we offer or give our officers and our staff a challenge coin, and Lisa, I'm going to give this coin because it's actually from the Police Chiefs Association, which I was happily appointed to this year, and soon my term will be over, so I don't have to do some of the meetings. But on this coin, it's not like from the Chiefs Association, but from myself, but on the back of it, because I had some influence on how the coin was made, it's got the cross flags with the American flag and the Arizona flag with the superstition mountains in the background.
Lisa, how you doing?
I'm good.
Super special night, Your Honor, members of council. This rarely happens, thirty years of service to a community, to our city. We honor you tonight, your family's here, so many staff members are here as well to support you and been a part of what you have done, Lisa, twenty-four-seven, seven days a week forever, and we know that you've mentored so many other of our officers, and I mean officers, as you've worked with them and communicated with them and helped keep our community safe. So as part of the recognition tonight, the City of Apache Junction has a few things to give you. So first is a certificate for the years of service, and included in our packet here is forty hours of paid time off. Well deserved, that's the monetary award, and it says, "Congratulations on reaching thirty years of service." In addition, we have a wonderful plaque. And we'll get a photo here in a minute. Lisa Emmanheiser, thirty years of service. Thank you. Nineteen eighty-nine to two thousand and nineteen.
Before I turn the mic over to you, your forty hours of leave that the city manager gave you has been officially canceled.
Going on a cruise, I need that.
I just wanted to say I have totally enjoyed the last thirty years with the City of Apache Junction. When I moved out here thirty years ago, the US sixty didn't even go past Gilbert Road. I have seen this place grow and grow, and I absolutely love it. I would not have done, there's nothing else I wish I would have done over the last thirty years. The city is great, great people that work here, been through many chiefs, they're all great, love the one that we have now. I'd have to thank my family. I've got family here from out of state that came to see this. I've got family, friends here that I've been my support group through this whole thirty years. You know, just when you think you've had that call that you just can't do it anymore, you don't want to come to work the next day, talk to them about it, and that's what you're there for. You go to work the next day, you take that first call to suicidal subject, you talk them out of it, and you know why you're there. And I wouldn't change anything. Wouldn't change anything. So I just wanted to say, goals, reach your goals, reach your dreams. I'm fifty years old and got my degree, and my dreams, I've always wished that I would have written things down of, you know, the past calls that we've had. My memory is not good, had a stroke, and now I'm regretting it because I don't have that stuff. I wanted to write a book about all the things that done over the last thirty years, but I just absolutely love the city, and thank you very much, council, for everything that you do.
Thank you.
Just so she doesn't resign tomorrow.
Well, I think we just set a record. In my twelve years here, I don't think I've ever seen that many cameras for one of these before.
That's true.
Well, that explains why they're all here.
Half our audience is leaving.
Okay, for those that are remaining. You'll notice that everybody up here is wearing purple tonight, and there's a reason for that, which if you don't know, you're going to learn about. We have a presentation tonight designating October fifth through twelfth, two thousand and nineteen, as a week without violence. And bear with me, because the font on this one is very small. Whereas the Children's Benefit Foundation, a 501(c)(3) organization, makes substantial contributions to the future of America's children, our voters, workers, and citizens of tomorrow, promoting a cool choice of optimum lifestyle and a good get-off-of-drugs-drinking danger-and-debt lifestyle, and whereas excellence in wellness and good health is dependent on a safe and healthy environment in the home and in the community, and whereas the safety and well-being of everyone's lives are unnecessarily jeopardized by crime and violence in the form of gangs, spousal and child abuse, drug and alcohol abuse, vandalism, and school shootings in our growing community, and whereas it is our responsibility as residents of the City of Apache Junction to support each other in advocating nonviolence and securing a future for our children and safe families. And whereas all citizens respectfully should view violence as one of our nation's biggest challenges and look for solutions to end the violence, and whereas numerous businesses, schools, national programs, and organizations around the world are among those creating answers, and whereas the observance of a week without violence will create awareness, educate, and strengthen the message that we can substantially promote all of our state and nation to join us as our campaign advocating nonviolence and make a solemn commitment to end the violence, promote peace, and make our community a safer place to live. Now therefore I, Jeff Sertie, Mayor of the City of Apache Junction, Arizona, do hereby proclaim October fifth through twelfth, two thousand and nineteen, as a week without violence in the City of Apache Junction, and this is going to be accepted by Connie Perez of the Boys and Girls Club. As well as Ray from CAFHA.
Mayor and councilors, just to share a little bit of information about the week without violence, I've been involved with this committee for the last seven years, and what we've been promoting is nonviolence in the communities, and this is something that's supported throughout the whole East Valley. And every year, over close to between a hundred to a hundred and fifty students from throughout the school districts here in the area receive awards for posters, for poetry contests, for just for words, sometimes even, you know, pushing a song. And this year, there is going to be a recognition for all these students at the Mesa Community College Performing Arts Center, which is this coming Saturday in the afternoon, and they, and the parents show up with the kids and stuff, and it's really an event to really promote nonviolence. And Dr. Ruth Lim, who's the founder of the Children's Benefit Foundation, has been, it's a long hard process that she's worked on, and this is one of the reasons why it's part of Domestic Violence Awareness Month, is the mere fact that we're trying to promote a community of nonviolence, especially through our kids. So that's what it's all about. So thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, and our other one is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. The font is a little bigger on this one. Whereas anyone can be a victim of domestic violence regardless of age, sex, ethnicity, sexual orientation, socioeconomic status, or religion, and whereas domestic violence in any community may exist as a hidden, silent, and often unrecognized reality that is often not reported to authorities, and whereas there is a need to challenge the assumptions made about domestic violence, become proactive in preventing domestic violence, and hold offenders accountable, and whereas the City of Apache Junction, the Apache Junction Police Department, the Community Alliance Against Family Abuse, and other agencies, organizations, and state coalitions across Arizona and the nation are committed to preventing domestic violence by promoting prevention awareness campaigns, educating the community, and advocating for victims' rights. Now therefore I, Jeff Sertie, Mayor of the City of Apache Junction, Arizona, do hereby proclaim October two thousand and nineteen as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Apache Junction, and urge all citizens to work together to prevent domestic violence, and Ray Villa will come up again.
Again, I want to thank the mayor and council for the support of this proclamation and the support of the community. I will tell you something that I am supremely impressed by the work that we do together, not only with the work that I work with the city, but with the police department, with the county and stuff. We're working diligently every day to try to reduce the amount of violence that happens between men and women. And again, as a trauma-formed care agency, our goal is to start with the parents and work our way down to the kids to eventually someday promoting family unity that'll keep from this happening in the future. So again, thank you so much for your support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Announcements? Announcements and current events, let's start over here with Robin.
Other than two days of snow, no. Two days.
I'd like to take this opportunity to recognize Officer Kellogg. Over the flood we had, he was involved in a water rescue, and his body cam footage caught the whole thing. There was an elderly man pinned up against the fence with the rushing current. He went out there, put the guy on his back, and probably brought him in thirty yards to safety. It was incredible. It was about a twelve-minute video. He was going up and down the wash trying to find him. All he could do is hear him, and he finally got ahold of him and brought him to safety. And I think this guy needs to be singled out and be recognized.
Krista?
Well, I didn't have any announcements, but to go off of that, speaking of Officer Kellogg, he's new. He's been with the force for about three years. I had the privilege and opportunity to attend his graduation before he came to AJPD. And I can tell you that this type of thing from him is common ground, because a week prior to that, my company had to help assist somebody that had broken down on the side of the road with a tow, and they were not in a safe location, and Officer Kellogg had pushed this car by hand, by himself, because the people in the vehicle were disabled, they couldn't get it where it needed to be so they were safe, and he pushed it, I don't know how many yards, but probably at least a half of a football field length. And so this, he is just a great example of the officers that we have on our force, and we are very appreciative to have this young officer with us.
Good job, Chief.
Chip?
Yes, today I had the opportunity to go and listen to some presentations from one of our neighboring communities, Superior, and how they are working towards promoting the area becoming a recreation area for hikers and bikers and equestrians in their community, and how they want to grow on the, I want to say, on the eastern side of the superstitions area. And it was very interesting, and I would definitely, with our aspects of being here on the outside of the superstitions and all the opportunities we have here, it makes you really appreciate the area that we live in and how we have a lot of this activities that we have right at our footsteps. And I just appreciate that as well and what they're doing, and want to continue on working with them as we all move forward.
Gail?
Yeah, I want to...
No.
No. Yeah. Yes, Superior's also been working with us too with the beginning discussions of trying to get the superstitions designated as a national monument, which would just increase the recreation a bunch also and put... a bunch also and put us on the map like crazy. I want to commend Public Works and Parks and Recreation. As you all know, we had a deluge. We had like three inches of rain within an hour or so, and if you're out there listening, we will get to your streets. We kind of triage them, and we do the dangerous ones first, then we get the driveways open, and then lastly, we will be getting the sweepers out there and getting all the rocks and dirt off the road, so just be patient, and we will get to you. And I love Parks and Recreation in there too, because everybody just thinks they umpire ballgames and lime the fields, but their parks got wrecked as well, and they were out there repairing them, and just imagine what that rain would do to the park, and they're unusable, and they go out there and work hand-in-hand with Public Works to get them back up. So I want to commend both of those groups, so.
City manager's report.
Thank you, Your Honor. Yes, we'll get to the report on the storm. I have a bunch of items actually to talk about. This storm was unprecedented in that this amount of rain that came over us went to a nor'easterly flow. In other words, the storm went north and east, to whereas it kept raining for the three, four, five inches, it kept coming back down through our washes, and so we have a little bit of rain totals here in a minute, but tonight is an emphasis on people, as we have already honored one of our greatest public servants. Yesterday, many of us, including staff and council members and family of Nick Blake, came to honor his tenure with the City of Apache Junction. Nick came to us 26 years ago and has his footprint on every single parks facility that we have today, and tonight I'd be remiss if we didn't thank him and honor him and make sure the community knew about Nick's retirement. He is super anxious about his next tenure, but he's also very happy, and we had a chance to thank him yesterday. Matt, let's go over to the rain totals now if we can. Here's the map that showed the 3.5 inches that was north, 3.6 that was north in the Goldfields. We also have some photos of some of the areas. Here's some of the flow. We have Palm Wash and Siphon Draw and Weeks Wash that takes so much of the area, and those are FEMA floodways, and we do get tricked a little bit in Arizona. I always say, starting October 1, we may see many, many, many days without clouds, and we get a little bit, I would say, not prepared, and we need to be prepared. And here are some of the roadways that we had that took on it. Broadway, Shane Kieso said he had never seen Broadway and Tomahawk flow like it had on Monday. This area looks, Los Dutchmen and Cortez area, the northeast part, and it just brings so much sand. If anybody would know, we just have so much, our staff, really all departments, even including our, yeah, we're going to get to that, our Parks and Rec, Public Works, but also municipal court, court service workers, community service workers, folks from Pinal County have been out helping. In addition, the day that this was happening, Chuck Coment of Pinal County called me. We were on the phone working together with Pinal County, making sure we're coordinated, because many of the areas were in our city, but also were just outside our boundaries. Al, if you could roll the video, starting at minute 30, we could watch a little bit. It is a 12-minute video, but I do also want to commend Officer Kellogg and his quick action, and glad he's safe as well. And we work great with Superstition Fire Medical.
I'm just now reaching them. Or Vista, just to the west into Wash. All right?
I've got a bad knee.
I know.
Way bad.
No, no, I'm just holding onto you.
I'm swallowing a lot of water.
From the south side, you're not going to be able to get to it from the north.
I can maybe stand up.
All right. Can you do me a favor? Wrap your other arm around my left shoulder. You good? You good? Are you able to jump up on my back? Here, try. Wrap all the way around, I got you. As long as you can hold yourself up. You good? Okay. Yep, I'm good. You're good. We're just going to get to the front of this house.
There we go. So glad everyone's safe. It was a very scary morning, and we want to thank all our first responders who did such a professional and great work. And before I close my report tonight, you'll, we want to honor someone who has been here with us for a very long time, who is unable to be here, and who sat in this chair for 39 years, Kathy Connolly. I wanted to recognize her. We are working on getting her some information and some of our greatest kudos. Recently, she was recognized in front of the community for 39 years of serving as the city clerk of Apache Junction. She's received many, many letters of appreciation from various resident city council for extraordinary work and dedication to her job. She was part of the city's first emergency management team for disaster preparedness, and she was recognized in 1986 and in 1987 in Who's Who in the West. She's a member of the Association of Records Manager and Administrators for years of service. She's a member of the Arizona Municipal Clerks Association since 1982. She gave back to her professional organization, the Arizona Municipal Clerks Association, by serving on its many committees. She was a certified municipal clerk and an Arizona Certified Elections Official. Kathy served in so many capacities throughout the years in the city. She served as an interim development service director several times, as the city manager or acting city manager. Many people may not have known that. She was considered in the state of Arizona as an election expert in municipal government, and many, many city clerks from across the state would often call our city clerk Kathy to find out how to administer election law. She also, in the early 2000s, brought forward a very innovative program called Self-Collect for our sales tax, and we were one of 14 cities and towns in Arizona that were able to house Self-Collect until the state removed that authority. And one of the rumors around City Hall is that she is the first person to ever adopted a pet at Paws and Claws, and I don't know if that's true or not, but we like to think so. We miss her. I don't know, did we show the, we were able to show a couple photos of Kathy.
The old council chambers.
The old council chambers, yeah. So tonight we honor 39 years plus to Kathy Connolly for years of service, and our thoughts and prayers are with her and her family at this time. To continue on with my report, over the last several weeks, Mayor Sertie's asked that we invite officials from Pinal County to come in, and two weeks ago we had the county attorney, and tonight we are thrilled to have with us Sheriff. You ready? Sheriff Lamb, can you please go forward? Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you for having me tonight. Brian, thank you for the invitation. I'm not near as dynamic as Kent Volkmer, but I'm going to do the best I can. I wish Lisa would have stayed, because 30 years and 39 years, sitting on a beach is a long time, let alone working, and especially in law enforcement, it's a tremendous amount of service, and especially as a dispatcher. All too often, they go unnoticed and unrecognized for the work that they do, and it's tremendous. So I'm just going to keep this real quick. I wanted to come in and thank you first and foremost with the work, for the working relationship we have had with the council members, with the mayor, with the city, your PIO, and especially the police department. I feel like over the last few years, we've had a really good working relationship, Chief Kelly and his staff. We've done a lot of work together. We recently did some traffic enforcement together on Ironwood, which we know is the auto bond out there, and it was very successful. I don't know how many citations we wrote, but it was a lot. It was successful for us, probably not so much for the people who got tickets. They're probably not as happy, but it was extremely successful. We've also worked hard, we've had our Ghost Unit, which is our gang and habitual offender strike team. They've picked up several people out here, helping with those who have warrants. I think that their average sentence that they get for the people they pick up is 19 years, so they are out looking for the worst of the worst, and it's been our honor to be able to help in this city as well. I know our Drug Unit has done some work out here and worked in conjunction with your city and with the police department to try to eradicate, which is not just an issue, this is an issue everywhere across America and across the county. None of us are immune to it, and we've done a really good job working together to try to eradicate some of those issues. School, we've been working real hard to, we only have a couple schools that belong, I think we have the one up here up north and then Peralta School, but we worked hard with the school superintendent and your principals to make sure that we have a positive relationship there, and I thought we had an amazing response with your police department when we had the potential school shooter down at the high school. I think that's been several months now, but we had so many resources there immediately, and I thought as a sheriff's office, we were very proud of the response we had and the communication and teamwork that we had with the city. On a county level, I know this is the city, but you're all still county taxpayers, we have reduced crime almost 5% over the last three years, so that's been very good. When I first came in, we had some very difficult budget issues. It took us a couple years, but I'm happy to report that this year we actually came in approximately $200,000 under budget, and that includes this year, we've got our officers their first raise in 11 years. So thank you to you, the taxpayers, for making that possible. A lot of them were very underpaid, and we're happy to get them to where they need to be, and it's also going to help us with hiring, and I promise the chief, we'll try not to steal anybody. We try not to rob from within the county. And we've done a lot of other things. We've reduced the jail population. That is in large and part to our county attorney. He helped a lot with that, and we're going to continue to work hard to keep that jail population down, reducing the tax liability for the taxpayers. So things are going very well at the county. We're very happy. We're excited about some of the things that we're doing, some of the programs we're implementing throughout the county, and I'm grateful for the opportunity to come here to be able to talk to you. I'm going to open it up for questions, but after that, I'm probably going to take off. I know you guys probably have some really exciting stuff you want to talk about tonight, and I'm really sad that I'm going to have to duck out and miss those things, but I wanted to, again, thank you for this opportunity, and I'd like to open to any questions you may have.
One of the concerns we always have is the county islands that are inside the city and up against the city, and just like to get your thought on that, and how can we help to work together to, because a lot of the reputation that we get actually is not the city, it's the abutting areas in the county, so.
Yeah, and there's definitely some, Mr. Mayor, there's definitely some work we need to do there, and we'll work with Chief Kelly on, and I know we have in the past, and then it becomes, kind of becomes a not important issue, and we need to refocus that. We can coordinate with Ghost and our Drug Units to make sure that we're keeping crime down in those areas as well. As you know, those county islands sometimes tend to get ignored, and you have my commitment as the sheriff that we'll continue to focus on those areas and do what we can to help your department make sure that this is a great place to live and recreate, just as your motto is.
Krista.
I just wanted to comment, you mentioned that the numbers in your jails are down. That doesn't mean that we're letting violent criminals out. You've explained in the past, I've seen your presentation before, and it just means that we're taking some of the people that can be rehabilitated with drug issues and whatnot, and you've got some great programs going. I don't know if you have a minute to share that with the council, what that means, but I don't want people to think that you're just opening the doors and kicking people out.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Rizzi, thank you very much. That is a good point, and I usually do explain that, because when we reduce those numbers, you want to think that the crime is, we're just ignoring the crime, and that's not the case. There was a lot of people that were in our jail that were on very low bond amounts, and were costing us, the taxpayers, more money to house them than to just get them out and get them through the court system. We've reduced the amount of time that these cases are taking in the court system. We have done some things, the county attorney gave us the option to cite for possession of marijuana or possession of paraphernalia, which that in turn has reduced the jail population as well. And we've also done some programs, like our HMB program, our Housing Unit for Military Veterans. We've had approximately 80 people come through that program with, I think the last was three reoffending. That's a, that is a huge recidivism, well, that's a very low recidivism rate and a huge success. On the level, we've actually seen a reduction in recidivism as well. So it shows that some of the programs that we're implementing, we just implemented tablets in there, which a lot of people think, why do they get tablets when they're in jail? We are trying to help these people get jobs. We're trying to return a better product into the communities than what came to us, and so we've put a lot of focus and emphasis. We have Drug Rehabilitation AA. We just, we're implementing a tattoo removal program, which is paid for out of the jail, our inmate welfare funds, which is monies derived from their, the commissary, the phones, the videos. That is going to be a tremendous program. The first time we did it, I think we had, oh, we had all sorts of people with tattoos all over their face and everywhere showing up. These programs work, and the goal is to reduce recidivism and keep our jail population down.
We appreciate that.
Anyone else?
Talk a little bit about what you're doing with the youth that get into issues with the law, the program that you're doing to rehabilitate them.
So in February of this year, Mr. Mayor, council members, in February of this year, we implemented the Sheriff's Redirection Program. I went to the county attorney early on, and I sensed a need to kind of help these kids that were getting in trouble with possession of marijuana, trespassing, incorrigible issues, and I asked the county attorney to give us a crack at them as law enforcement and give us the ability to try to have some type of mentorship and effect in their lives, and it's been a great program. We started in Santan Valley, which also encompasses anybody who gets in trouble in this area of Apache Junction from the sheriff's deputies. If they complete the program, which we do four class hours and eight hours of community service, the four classes are goal-setting and planning, digital media, social media, sexting, the dangers of that, drugs and alcohol, and then we do a career night. It takes two months, because we do the class every other week, and if they successfully complete this, which every one of them except for one have done, they will actually, everything goes away, and after a year, we purge the report from the system, so they can honestly say that they've never been arrested. It's been a great program. The parents are very appreciative of it, and the whole program is not designed to make them feel bad. The program is designed for them to recognize their value and how, what they can be and how much more they can do with their lives, and how their decisions do affect them and how they affect them long-term, and we've seen a lot of success, and we're excited about that program, and would love to incorporate that with the city in any way we can. Obviously, that would be something we'd have to sit down with the chief and the city and determine whether that's something that would work for you as well, but we'd be more than happy to look at expanding that program to include the city.
Anyone else?
Sheriff Lamb, you just about taking some officers. We may be willing to negotiate Officer Kellogg for a first or second round draft pick.
No doubt.
And two, or five to eight-year veterans for the experience.
Yeah, I leaned over to the chief, and I said, "Is that Officer Kellogg?" So he's on my radar.
Okay, well, let's let him get home. He's had a long day, so thank you for coming out.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. Okay, presentation, discussion, public hearing, and consideration of an endorsement for a Class A bingo license for the Multi-Gen Center, Jamie Sullivan.
Hi, Mayor and Council. Small game bingo license is regulated through the state of Arizona. It is a Class A bingo license. We used to have this license through EVAR when they ran our senior programs, but over time, we decided to go with prizes instead of money, and we have since heard from our customers and participants that they don't really like that idea, and they would like us to bring back small gaming bingo, which means it's played once a week, it's 25 cents a card, with 100% of the proceeds go back out to the winner, which is approximately $10 to $25 total, paid out to all the winners. We have worked with the city clerk's office and our city attorney to prepare the application, so they have a clear understanding of what our requirements are, and our state law requires that we come before you and have a public hearing. And our state law requires that we come before you and have a public hearing, which we are doing, and have our governing board endorse our application. So, on behalf of our department, we are requesting that you consider endorsing the bingo license application that we have submitted to you.
Any discussion among us?
I just have a question and it's really more for Jennifer. Um, under number six on the second page, it says the local governing body fee will be payable to the appropriate local governing entity.
Yes.
Is this a fee that we collect from other people other than ourselves? Or is this one of those cases where we don't have it on the books to allow us to collect it?
Mayor, Councilmember Evans. A bingo license, the state collects a ten-dollar fee, the city collects a five-dollar fee.
So, we do?
We do collect a fee.
Okay, we just don't collect it for ourselves.
Not for ourselves.
It's kind of redundant, but.
So, on your applica, you said they're only going to play once a week?
They play bingo once a week.
Okay, because on your-
They play the small games bingo weekly. We have other, what they call social bingos, which isn't for money. We'll still continue to play that because some of them do like the prizes.
Okay, because on your application, you have it marked down for three days, three different, or three-
That is if we want to increase, that gives us the ability to play up to three days. But we go back to, we'd start with one day a week.
And then, is, what's the age that can play?
It's in our senior programs, but it would be an adult. They'd have to be eighteen or older to play.
And can city council people come and play?
You can. They would love that, actually. Especially if you bring your twenty-five cents and you play your bingo.
I bet the prizes were worth more than the cash.
They probably are.
Can we come and call the bingo?
No, you have to have an affidavit, which is in the application, signed and notarized by an official. But if you would like to be a volunteer, you can contact J.J. Underwood, our coordinator for senior programs, and he'll work with you to become our caller.
You have to be licensed or type thing?
You have to go through a process.
Really?
Only honest people can call.
Sorry, Jeff.
I'm not saying you're not honest, you just have to go through the process.
No promises.
Somebody has to tell me that. Are there any other questions?
Hey, Jeff, you need to star on your license.
That's too funny.
So, it's like being a pit boss then?
Um, I don't know. Maybe, a bookie? I don't know.
Because back when I was running nursing homes and stuff, we didn't, they didn't gamble, but we got, I got to call the bingo for the residents and stuff. And that was, that was one of the highlights.
You could come and call social bingo, but if you're playing for money, you have to go through the process.
Wow, you gotta be honest.
Ms. Mayor?
I was gonna say really bored, but okay.
How many games do you play a night?
Uh, we, the winnings, I don't know. Can I call J.J. to? I don't know how many games they completely play in a day until they fall asleep.
So, two?
Ten, ten games. Ten games.
And that twenty-five dollars is for all ten games?
It just depends because it's a quarter a card, so if you play two cards and your neighbor plays five cards.
Oh, I'm sure like eight to ten cards are being played at the same time.
Six is the max. There are rules, so we play six cards, up to six cards. So, it just depends on how many players come that day. Uh, the pot will fluctuate.
Do you have to bring your own troll doll or?
Yes, you have to bring your own good luck charms. You could bring Councilmember Struble if you want.
Just give it a roll, Jeff. Okay, if no one else, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to speak on this item? Hearing and seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. If no more discussion, then I'll ask for a motion.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that the application for a Class A bingo license for the senior service programs at the Multi-Generational Center be approved and an endorsement by the city council be submitted to the Department of Revenue Bingo Division.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor?
Consideration of annual appointments and reappointments to Board of Adjustment, Library Board, Parks and Rec, and P&amp;Z. Jennifer, I have an order that we'd like to go in, but would you like to introduce this?
Um, Your Honor, last night, you interviewed applicants for four of the city's boards and commissions. Um, staff did reach out to those individuals that did not appear last night. We were able to reach two of them. Um, so if you're considering, uh, I apologize, I don't have his name. They actually indicated um, that if you had enough applicants, they wouldn't mind not serving. Um, if you'd like to, you can start in any order that you'd like this evening. Um, I just want to remind the council that on the Board of Adjustment, the last motion is to fill a vacancy. So, that would only be a one term until next year.
I have a question, Your Honor. Jennifer, when we make the nominations for these, does it, do we have to go one at a time or for like each board, can we select the three people or the two people? Or do we have to go one person at a time and vote?
You can probably do, appoint two or three at one time. It's just when we get to the motion on the Board of Adjustment that I ask that you make that motion for the one individual that's going to be serving a one-year term.
Well, Mr. Mayor, if I may, I don't like to-
Do you want to do individual?
I'll clarify, I'll clarify. Um, what will happen, what could happen is there might be a slate of people you want and then someone might not like one of them. So, they might vote yes on that one, but not on the other one. I wouldn't do it that way because it's going to get too confusing. I would do it one at a time. That's my recommendation.
They would have to um, not change the motion.
You'll save, what, two minutes, maybe?
Okay. In the past, you have elected to do individual motions.
Okay, I'd like to start with Parks and Recreation. Do I have a motion?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that Luciano Bazin be appointed, be reappointed to the Parks and Rec Commission for a term to expire October thirty-one, twenty-twenty-two.
Second.
Roll call. I meant to say planning and zoning, but it started with a P, so. That's what threw me, so uh, yeah, so we've already started on this, so roll call.
All right, Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
I'm gonna vote no, just because I want to um, move people around, so.
Okay. Mayor Sertie?
Yes. Since I went out of order, can I go back to, and come back to this? Okay, because I actually had, was gonna do those last. I want to go to planning and zoning first and do those. So, we'll, we'll come back to Parks and Recreation and I apologize.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, if I may, can you announce the result of that? I didn't hear you say what the result was.
It was six to one.
Okay.
Okay.
Motion passes.
So, we'll come back to that then. So, we're gonna go to planning and zoning and I apologize once again. Do I have a motion?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that Michael McGraw be uh, reappointed to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a term to expire October thirty-one, twenty-twenty-two.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor?
And the other one for P&amp;Z.
Your Honor, I move that Dave Hanchy be reappointed to the Planning and Zoning Commission uh, for a term to expire October thirty-one, twenty-twenty-two.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor?
I would like now to go to Board of Adjustment and these first two will be for full terms and then the last. So, do I have a motion? Yes, Krista?
I move that Frank Shanbeck be appointed to the Board of Adjustment for a term to expire on October thirty-first, twenty-twenty.
Second.
Roll call.
Twenty-twenty.
Twenty-twenty-two. Excuse me, twenty-twenty-two.
Okay, second.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor?
Next motion.
Your Honor?
Uh, I move that Dick Begman be appointed to the Board of Adjustment for a term to expire on October thirty-one, twenty-twenty-two.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Roll call.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Rizzi?
I'm gonna vote no, but I'll be able to explain it on the next vote.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
No.
Councilmember Evans?
No.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Four to three, Your Honor. Motion passes.
And one more motion?
Your Honor.
Who did the last one? Let's do Krista this one.
Um, Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that Sean O'Hara be appointed to the Board of Adjustment for a term to expire, okay, I gotta change this, to expire on October thirty-first, twenty-twenty.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor. Motion passes.
Okay. So, now let's go back and finish Parks and Rec. There's one more there?
Yes.
Yeah.
Do we have a motion for the last Parks and Rec?
Your Honor, I move that Heather Muller be appointed to the Parks and Rec Commission for a term to expire October thirty-one, twenty-twenty-two.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor?
And last, we have three positions for the Library Board.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that Judy Bory be appointed to the Library Board for a term to expire on October thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two.
Second.
Second. Roll call.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that Willie Howard be reappointed to the Library Board for a term to expire October thirty-one, twenty-twenty-two.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor?
I believe we have one more left.
Yes. Your Honor, I move that Barbara Fitzgerald be appointed to the Library Board for a term to expire on October thirty-one, twenty-twenty-two.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Sure, I'll second it.
I have a second from Vice Mayor Wilson. Councilmember Rizzi?
No.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
No.
Councilmember Barker?
No.
Councilmember Struble?
No.
Councilmember Schroder?
No.
Mayor Sertie?
No.
One to six, motion fails, Your Honor?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that James Jackson be appointed to the Library Board for a term to expire on October thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder?
No.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Six to one, Your Honor. Motion passes.
Have we forgotten any?
No, all of them. You're good. Everyone has been appointed.
Krista, did you want to explain something?
I did want to explain something, Your Honor. Um, the one appointment for, we had a couple of appointments for Board of Adjustment um, for Frank and Sean and Dirk Begman. And it wasn't that I wasn't supporting any of those three. Actually, I was in support of all of those three, but didn't realize that there was a difference in the years. And so, I mixed up the nomination and so I apologize for that. Thank you for your understanding.
Do we have a meeting on the, or a motion on the next meeting dates?
Sure.
Nope.
Find it.
Yeah.
You find it.
I'm getting there. Hang on. Hang on.
Back to the beginning.
You got it or I got it?
I got it.
All right.
Okay. I move that an executive session at six PM and a work session at seven PM for Monday, October fourteenth, twenty-nineteen. And an executive session at six PM and a work session at seven PM for Tuesday, October fifteenth, twenty-nineteen in the City Council Conference Room and City Council Chambers located at three hundred East Superstition Boulevard, Apache Junction, Arizona, respectively, and other meetings if necessary.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor?
This is the time for the public to express requests, communications, comments, and suggestions. Each speaker must have already filled out a request to speak form and handed it to the city clerk before the end of the city manager's report. All issues shall be presented in a professional manner without personal attacks. Under the open meeting law, the council cannot engage in discussion on the issues presented, but may respond to criticism and may direct staff to follow up with the speaker directly and/or place this matter on a future agenda for council discussion. There's a three-minute time limit for each speaker and we'll need your name and address. And the first one is Terry Dagan.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, three minutes is gonna be tough. I'm a man of many words. Um, but thanks for having me. So, we're just, I just wanted to review the-
We have your address.
Oh, I'm sorry. Terry Dagan, twenty-one thirty-eight East Broadway, Apache Junction, Arizona, eight-five-two-one-nine. One-one-nine.
Okay.
It's been a long day. So, anyway, so I'm here to, to just quickly review the policy that was enacted over the summer and it really applies to very few, but for those that apply to, it's really important to them, which is the square foot parameter that was put in the retirement parks for the additions that are being built. Uh, it was, previously, it was from setback to setback we could build. And, and over the summer, it went to a limit of four hundred square feet. the summer, it went to a, a limit of 400 square feet. Now, there was a really, really positive precedent that I think was set by Road Haven, one of the city's largest parks, that, that limited it to 48% of your lot, which basically makes it proportional to your lot size and, and keeps things very, very consistent. So, um, we're general contractors here and, and have been working in the city for over 25 years. The majority of our employees live here in Apache Junction. So, the city is important to us. And, uh, and overall appearance certainly is too. Um, so, so like I said, overall, we just like your consideration. So, instead of going from one extreme, which is setback to setback, down to 400 square feet, uh, meet, meeting in the middle and compromising. And I think that there's people on both sides that, that would be unhappy. There's some people that have very large lots. And that, there, there's a real small number of those left, actually, in the parks that we work in. Um, but we're, we're fans of regulation too. You know, there's, there's parks out there that are self-governed, and, and we don't work in those parks because we appreciate the oversight that, that we get from the city, because it helps us to mitigate risk and overall liability from, um, rather than having volunteers from Architect Committee tell us where the lot lines are. At least, we have the city to, to help regulate that. So, um, we don't have an issue with regulation. It's just more of meeting in the middle and compromising. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Jaclyn Smith.
Hey, my name's Jaclyn Smith. My address, 6274 East 20th Avenue, Apache Junction, Arizona, 85119. Um, Your Honor, council, thank you for letting me speak tonight. Um, I'd also like to thank you. Uh, I'm, well, I'm with the PAC that's trying to help the AJUSD bond and override, capital override pass this time. And I'd like to thank all of you that have been supportive. Um, we greatly appreciate that. Um, there's been a lot of factual information that's been mailed out to the public, uh, fact sheets, and most recently, the election pamphlet. A lot of facts. I guess I'm here as a parent, and I always get emotional about this. Because, um, you can, we, we, the superintendent and the current school board have done a wonderful job of really kind of turning this district around over the last couple of years. They put policies in place that have allowed transparency, um, much more attention to budget. Uh, and the superintendent council that was put together to determine whether this override should go out this year and, uh, and the bond, um, that was members of the community. And we learned so much. When you look at this fact sheet, it's the phone system, the, the things that are listed here. You can just read over them and think, that's a lot of money. And it is a lot of money. But, it's necessary. Visiting the schools, uh, seeing the things that our kids need and don't have. Um, the track's been a big issue. That's, that's something that our students are allowed, our students are allowed to practice on that track. But, no one else in the AIA is allowed to come and use that track because it's unsafe. Our students deserve better. Um, air conditioners that don't work for weeks because they're so old, purchased in the 90s, that they can't get parts. Um, our students deserve better. Uh, kids who come to school and, um, they're so used to carpet that's rippled and carpet that's been ripped up and because it was in such bad shape. And now, there's glue on the floor and stains of glue. And they walk into these rooms and I don't think they complain. Um, but seeing it is, seeing it is believing. We have lots of tours. I would ask the community to come and-
That's it?
And see the schools. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Andrea Lang Sims.
Hi, good evening. My name's Andrea Lang Sims. My address is 1060 West Tepee, Apache Junction, 85120. And I am a resident of this fine city that I love so much. I am a parent, a proud parent of a Four Peaks Road Runner. And I am a fellow educator. So, I follow Jackie. And my communication and call to the public regarding our Apache Junction Unified School District Fund and capital override at this time. So, I just want to address, Mayor, Council, thank you very much for the opportunity to do this. I know that in a couple of weeks, you'll have an opportunity to get some more factual information from Dr. Anderson, our superintendent. But, my goal tonight is to connect some of the things that you heard and celebrated tonight in our community to why this is such an important thing. So, um, when we started, Vice Mayor Wilson started with an invocation that talked about being a proud citizen, having pride in, in living in our community, raising children in our community, owning a business in this community, and enjoying our community. And then, later on, Mayor Sertie, you referenced really capitalizing on the superstitions and building an environment that draws people in. Well, people don't come if you don't have good schools. So, if we really want to capitalize on the beauty of Apache Junction, we also need to capitalize on the beauty of our schools. And right now, they are not providing a safe, equitable, or diverse environment or experiences for our kids. And we need to provide that for them. And it's our job as citizens, in order for us to be able to say we're, we're committed to children and we're advocates for them, we need to put money in the system. So, my call to you is to, to continue to help us advocate, which you've all done so well. And we really appreciate all of your support. But, I want you to understand a little bit more from, from the parent and educator angle and, and what that means. If you, oh, I never have enough time for all my words.
Don't stop.
I always have an opportunity to talk about our schools. And I want you to know, they are, they have the people, they have the facility. They just don't have the means to be able to meet all of our kids' needs, no matter who they are. So, if it's an air conditioner or a bus, great. It's also curriculum. We need to provide opportunities that are competitive to our neighbors, Gilbert, Mesa, Tempe. I don't care where you go. If you walk on those campuses, I guarantee you, skyline looks different. And those kids are the same kids that are coming back to our community and competing. And we want them back. We want 30-year veterans at our police department. We want 39-year veterans in our city. We want people to sit on this board later on who are highly educated and benefited from an amazing learning environment. We, we owe them that. So, I ask you to continue to bring that, um, to the focus and providing the opportunity for our kids to grow and thrive and come back. Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you for coming.
Charles Beal.
Charles Beal, Lot 21, San Marcos Crossing, Apache Junction. Uh, Council, I'd like to speak to you tonight about your revenue streams. Every last six weeks, I've watched the city, what looks like develop two new revenue streams. One from the Trash Initiative, one from the Arts Initiative. I want to ask this council to set up future councils for success by wrapping legislation around those revenue streams. So, when the Trash Initiative expires in 10 years, and we want to incorporate that into the city, we have those funds available to do so. So, please consider the legislation around the revenue streams based on the trash. Thank you.
Would anyone care to respond to anything?
Nope.
Then, with that, we will be adjourned.